You ready to adjourn?
Yep.
And call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Madam Chair, go ahead, please. Caster?
Here.
Medard?
Here.
Medard?
Here.
Bertowar?
Here.
Goodsell?
Here.
Berger?
Here.
And Garcia?
Here.
Thank you. Would everybody please stand for the pleasure of the agenda? Very good.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under a, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And with that, we'll consider approval of the agenda.
I'm going to move. A second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's up to you. I was going to say if we're going to approve the agenda, you may want to reorganize if you don't want to do closed session first. I thought we were going to do closed session first. But it's up to you.
Close session. Yeah, let's do closed session first, so. Can we go back?
Okay. I don't anticipate it's going to take too long, but there are two closed session items listed on the agenda. I think we can go across the way if you want. I think it's open for us to want to go there.
Okay. And with that, at 6:01 PM, the board is going to break into closed session. So the board will go back into open session at 7:16 PM.
Madam Chair, do you want me to read the report from closed session? There was no reportable action taken during closed session.
All right, now we'll move on to item six, public comments. At this time, the board will hear comments on any agenda item. If any person wishes to be heard, they shall stand, address the president, identify themselves, and state the subject for comment. Time limit leaves. Each for each speaker will be three minutes. Individuals who wish to speak on multiple items will be allowed four minutes to follow across item, all items. Do you have anybody that wants to make a public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Any member of the board staff or public may request that items for the consent calendar be removed for discussion. Items still moved shall be act upon separately immediately following approval of the items made on the consent calendar. Do you have a motion to approve the consent?
I'm going to move with this.
There you go.
I'm hoping that at some point in time, we'll get more detailed reports from this. I mean, yeah, if possible, please.
Okay, just real quick. So we did share that with our treasurer, and we're going to work on a better report, and we'll be running it through our director there. That's okay.
Thank you.
We did have the conversation yesterday about additional things to include, and that'll be an ongoing conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have a second?
Please second.
I have a motion by Berger, or a motion by Goodsell, and a second by Berger. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Now we will, item eight, board comments, reports on meetings and events attended by directors, and authorization for director attendance at upcoming meetings and events. Does any of my fellow directors have any reports on meetings or events that they've attended? Okay, so then, do I have any report by the education outreach committee?
Our outreach director has done a great job. He's submitted a few articles out in local papers and the local press, really good in getting our, some factual information out there to the public for them to read about, which is great. We've also established a logo for us to utilize at this time. Some of the board members have seen that in the emails coming out, and it's been used in the articles as well. We felt it was important to have a logo out there at this time to basically give us a little bit of an identity to the public as well. And then we still have some projects in the works, some real nice things, and so we'll keep you posted on those.
Now we have a report by the ad hoc negotiation committee.
Sure. Well, the AB 918 ad hoc negotiation committee has met a number of times since the last board meeting. We're going to meet again tomorrow to continue discussing negotiations opposite ECRMC. The negotiations are progressing towards, we anticipate, an asset transfer agreement. You'll note, there's a note on the agenda here that we anticipate a special board meeting the evening of November 5. So we'd ask that the board please keep that date in mind. That's the date that AB 918, it's our deadline date by which to finalize terms and proposed terms for the acquisition of ECRMC for the city and ECRMC's consideration. So we expect to bring that proposal to the board with the ad hoc committee's recommendation to the, to November 5 special board meeting. So if there's an issue with November 5, 6:00 PM, please let us know ASAP, because we would like to have the full board here if possible. There's a couple other items relating to the negotiation that I'll update you on under item 11, because they deal with the expenditure of some funds. But generally, we've been working closely with our folks at ECRMC. VMG, the appraiser who has been hired to make the appraisal of the hospital assets, has not quite wrapped up that appraisal yet. We have another Zoom scheduled with VMG on Monday, at which point hopefully we'll get to finalize that appraisal, which will be a big help in helping us form our proposal and helping us finalize our terms. We've been working closely with our consultants, our financial strategists, BRG, who have been very helpful also, and have another meeting with BRG scheduled for tomorrow. That's all the update I think I have. If I've forgotten anything, please chime in.
No, I think you're good. Now we'll move on to item nine, discussion in direction regarding joint powers. Is there anything with UCSD?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So, look at my notes. We, I have drafted a, following from the last discussion at the last board meeting, I've drafted a proposed joint powers agreement, management agreement, between IVHD and UCSD for the proposed management of ECRMC by UCSD, which of course they already do, but it would be a direct contract between IVHD and UCSD in anticipation of that acquisition. So it wouldn't become effective until the hospital is actually acquired. But once the hospital is acquired, we have an agreement in place that controls the management of that hospital. It also would bring prospectively pioneers into the fold under UCSD's management. We're still working through what that exactly looks like. I've proposed some terms. Counsel for UCSD is marking it up. We hope to talk probably tomorrow. But it's been super collaborative, I think, super positive towards the end goal, which is bringing these two hospitals together under IVHD's umbrella and figuring out how UCSD can fit in with some, you know, with the management of the two campus system. So that is something that we weren't quite ready to bring into this board meeting for approval, because it's, the details are still being finalized. And we want to make sure that the joint powers agreement makes sense with the proposed terms for acquisition of ECRMC. So we expect that that joint powers agreement will be brought to this board for consideration together with the terms to acquire ECRMC at the November 5 board meeting. I will say, there's a chance, this is going to be a very busy couple weeks. We're finalizing everything. It's down to the wire. So there is a chance we might ask for special board meetings between now and November 5, additional special board meetings. If we think there's a decision large enough that we need the board to weigh in on with respect to policy or direction, we might call special board meetings and ask, you know, the negotiation committee has been tremendous in giving us direction and ideas and guidance. But if we need an actual decision to be made on something, we may come back. And if we do come back, it could be that we bring the joint powers agreement to earlier than November 5. But for now, the plan is to bring both the proposed terms for acquisition of ECRMC and proposed joint powers agreement with UCSD to this board for consideration on November 5. I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any questions about the proposed joint powers agreement. And I do, it is important to me that when we have that agreement in substantial final form, ready for the board's consideration, that we circulate it many days in advance. So even though the special board meeting will be November 5, the goal is to have both the proposed asset transfer agreement and the proposed joint powers agreement ready with far more than the 24-hour notice required by the Brown Act. So that is, that is a goal of ours, to make sure you have enough time to read it and digest it so you can come prepared. And that may be one of the reasons we, we may bring it before November 5, so that if you have questions and you want us to make changes, we can, we can do that and then still have time to approve it before November 5. So, you know, be on the lookout for that.
Do you have any questions from the board? Now we'll move on to item 10, updating closed session and possible action. Ad hoc committee negotiations report with Tyson on the whole. Do you have an update on the joint power distribution?
I've had a couple meetings with Dr. Tyson and group, and also with ECRMC execs and Dr. Tyson. And we are still negotiating, and we're looking at building use, whether it's going to be separate or together. And licensing, we're looking at a facility, there's going to be a walk possibly next week with a local facility supervisor from the city of Callexico. So we're waiting still for some signs that need to come in. They were ordered on the 15th of September. There were two this week, but they haven't arrived yet. So those signs are the absolute only thing that's remaining from getting, from their occupancy from the city of Callexico. That doesn't mean that we might need something from another agency, but right now, that's the only one that we need. But Knox Fox is a part department requesting, having installed, and Dr. Tyson's been, he's been, he's a workaholic. Pretty much every week, he gets an update. So we're just waiting for the signs. On the, on the south end of the building, which is the building that was earmarked for a CT scanner, et cetera, we're looking also about the possible future use versus what was intended versus other possibilities, say, like a JV with ECRMC or anybody else. And that's still being discussed. So we have a couple follow-up needs to go through before we can get to a win-win. But he was very positive at the meeting. He met with Pablo, with David, ECRMC, myself, and he was very positive, so that's why I have to report.
I have a question. Have you installed the CT machine yet?
No.
So I think before you install it, you should have those discussions, because if you have to go by guidelines of federal and state guidelines, things like that, and you don't get licensing until, you want to install it correctly the first time. So definitely have a conversation about that before you install. Okay. Any more questions from the board?
I, just one. I know that about four months ago, we were having a discussion about the back parking lot, where they were going to put a couple EV stations or something like that, or a lot with an ID. What happened with that?
So the, the, the Lexico called for the setup to be ready, which the setup is ready. So my plan was to reach out to Comitessico, because they had some funds for putting those EV stations. Now currently, the plan is the extension and the preparation has been done in the front of the clinic. So to move it, move that preparation to the back would bring additional costs, which we're still attempting, how much that's going to be. So the prep work was done for that EV station to be done in the front. If we want to move it, it would require a change order. So we, you know, change orders are expensive, so right now, the only spot that the prep work will be done is for the front. Right across the street, there is a park, though, and it has, there's already, yeah, like six stations, four stations? Four stations. And obviously, we will keep, hopefully, we've met the requirement now, but obviously, it would be additional expense to add one. Unless Comitessico or anybody else that's providing grants for that was really willing to write the whole thing out, then definitely we'll be interested in bringing that.
Thanks.
Any more questions from the board? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 11, discussion and consideration of possible action to approve the following. Item eight, independent contract agreement for interim chief executive officer services.
Approved.
All seconded.
And so there's an agreement that's in our packet for Christopher for jumping forward to work as a part-time CEO, correct?
Yeah.
So a motion by Goodsell, and a second by Garcia. Are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Now we move on to item B, authorized expenditure and rep, for representations and warranties, insurance policy diligence fee in amount to not exceed $50,000.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is part of sort of the AB 918 update, but it's a separate agenda item, because we wanted to come to this board before exercising any authority to retain an insurance company to give us a, to do the underwriting and diligence on getting together a proposed representations and warranty insurance policy relating to the ECRMC transaction. So in a nutshell, there's two, this is very simplistic, but two sort of ways we could propose to acquire ECRMC, sort of as is, with a bunch of terms. Or kind of as is, with a bunch of representations about the hospital, the conditions, et cetera, representations and warranties that the hospital or the city would make. And we would get an insurer, like Marsh or a large insurance company, to give us insurance on the deal for prospective liabilities moving forward. So this doesn't protect against anything backwards-looking. But let's say, for example, there is a breach of one of the representations or warranties made by the city or made by ECRMC. You know, we don't know what we don't know. Possibly, they don't know what they don't know, right? So let's say there's a large, you know, class action lawsuit, ready to, ready to pounce, you know, relating to something that should have been represented or warranted. That is something that could be covered by insurance past a deductible kind of threshold. And instead of us pursuing ECRMC, which wouldn't be a legal entity anymore, or pursuing the city of El Centro for damages relating to breach of contract, we would have insurance for it, and we would get coverage by an insurance company. So it's a type of insurance that protects against losses caused by breaches of representations and warranties in what would typically be a corporate merger or acquisition, but it can be used by public companies as well, public agencies as well. It limits or eliminates the seller's liability for breaches of representations and warranties. It can provide identification protection for claims related to breaches of representations and warranties. Our mergers and acquisitions folks, this is not squarely within my wheelhouse, have advised that it might be a tool worthwhile for us to kind of consider as part of our proposed terms to acquire ECRMC. So it would be, we want to acquire ECRMC, here's the terms, and one of them is, you know, this insurance policy to go along with the deal. There is a retention and there is a premium, so there's obviously a cost relating to the insurance. And we would have to figure out, okay, well, who do we want to ask to pay that cost? Us, the city, splitting it, someone else? And depending on how large the insurance for the transaction is, is how large that premium or retention would be, because it's usually a small percentage of that transaction amount. But before we could even get a proposed policy, right, before, we can't have a company just come in and say, oh, it's a $100 million deal, here, here you go, and it's going to cost you a million dollars, or whatever. They need to do diligence in order to evaluate whether they want to underwrite the deal. So that diligence fee was quoted to us to be roughly $45,000, which is why the proposed amount on the agenda is a not to exceed $50,000. And that would again pay for the diligence fee for third-party diligence reports and for the insurance company to do the diligence required to consider underwriting this insurance policy. I talked with the ad hoc negotiation committee about this route, the insurance route, getting insurance on the deal. And we felt it was something that was potentially a good option. So we wanted to bring it to the board for consideration before moving forward, because obviously, if it's going to be a $45,000 expenditure, you know, that's kind of a significant amount. It would be a contract with a third-party insurance company. Our folks have talked to, I think, two different insurance companies to kind of try to get quotes on who would be the best to move forward with this. So I will leave that to the M&amp;A team's discretion. But before they move on it, I wanted to, we wanted to bring this to the board to make sure we had authority to move in this direction. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Hopefully, I have the answers to them, if you have any questions about this. But the request would be to authorize an expenditure for representations and warranties, insurance policy diligence fee in an amount not to exceed $50,000. So we can move forward with that over the next week.
Any questions from the board? Questions, comments, or questions?
The $45,000 fee will cover how long a period of time?
It would require the diligence necessary to get to a policy. So that is, I mean, I've heard from my folks that it could take a week. It could take longer. It could take four weeks. So it just depends on what kind of access they have to records and how much they need to continue digging through diligence. So the amount, it's not like, you know, it would be, I imagine, a not-to-exceed amount to conduct the diligence necessary to present a policy, like, because of policy options.
Then after the policy options are presented?
You could choose a sample.
You have to pay a fee?
Yes, yes, yes. There would be a premium, and then there's an ongoing kind of retention fee, from what I understand. And that is something that we won't know what that is until they've done the diligence, and then they can say, this is a great deal, here it is, or this is a very risky deal, here's what we're proposing, or et cetera. So we won't know what the proposed, and it could be that the insurance policy or that the insurance company provides multiple alternatives, right? You could do this, it's kind of like when you're getting insurance for your car. You can do this threshold, do this threshold, your son, it's just going to cost you, here's what we found. And they'll tell us at that point in time what they're willing to insure and what they're not. So.
So the $45,000 is just to get started, to be started?
Yes, it's all very expensive. All the mergers and acquisition stuff is very expensive. In my general counsel update, I'll tell you about the actuary, which is also expensive, but.
My understanding is like they go through, they do like, you know, phase one environmental assessments and on all facilities, and they kind of go through and do their own due diligence on top of like our buy-side due diligence, you know, it's all just part of, honestly, part of the buy-side due diligence that goes through this virgin acquisition process.
Correct. That's my understanding as well.
Do you have any questions? Do you have a motion?
I have, I do have a question. So in theory, how much time do we have to hit this down?
Well, so depending on.
And are we premature in it now, or is this something that we do need to have?
Definitely not premature. It would have been helpful to have this done by now, so that we can know exactly what we want to put into the final terms for November 5. Hopefully, it's done by November 5. But if it's not, it can be a condition of closing for the deal, because what we're doing is we're putting the deal before the board for consideration, so that the deal is going to be presented to the city and ECRMC for approval. And if they approve, if they approve too, after we've proposed the terms, we've got a deal. And part of the deal, as I understand it from our perspective, depending on the outcome of the diligence, can be, as a condition of closing this deal, we want to make sure we have representations and warranties, insurance, in an amount not to exceed X, for example. And so it doesn't need to necessarily be done by November 5, but certainly, it's prudent to get the ball rolling right now.
Especially when it'd be an extra life by November 5.
It's just a risk management, you know, and it's hard, because what we've talked about at the ad hoc negotiation committee is, is it worth the cost? We already have limited funds. But I guess the, you know, the, the issue with insurance always is, you don't want to pay for it, and then you don't end up needing it, and you feel like you wasted a bunch of money. But then it would be worse if you end up needing it and you don't have it. And, you know, AB 918 was passed to help two distressed hospitals come together, along with Heffernan, to come together under the IVHD umbrella to allow both hospitals and the community to succeed and thrive, right? It's not like people wouldn't pass legislation for two hospitals that are independently kicking butt to somehow, for some reason, merge. But, you know, we want to be really careful with these public funds as we bring these hospitals together to make sure there's not some unknown liability that could end up bankrupting UC, you know, like, that would be the worst thing that we could imagine, is we've done all this diligence, we're prepared, we have our plan, we have our five-year plan, and then we get hit with some unknown thing that we couldn't anticipate that would cause severe distress to the greater IVHD system. So that's one of the reasons that we're considering this insurance policy. So it's kind of like, hopefully, you don't need it, but God forbid you need it and it's not there. You know, it's, it's something that my team is recommending. We proposed it to the ad hoc negotiation committee, but of course, it's your call, you know, because we could also come into the deal without it.
Does this cover both sides as well? Like, where covers everybody that's in this party, or?
It would, I mean, it's my understanding that it would be buyer side. It could be helpful for seller. I know sellers could also get rep and warranty insurance, but rep and warranty insurance on the seller's side doesn't cover, you know, couldn't cover some of the stuff that buyer's side could cover.
I'll put the motion on the table. I think it's, it's best to do too much due diligence than not enough. I don't think that there's anything facetious going on, but I do believe that it is good to have a, a second option. I mean, I think it's good to have the coverage there, and I think it's good to just have, you know, another set of eyes looking at it, see something we may not.
All seconded.
I have a motion by Medard, and a second by Garcia. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Now we move on to number 12, general counsel update.
My quick update is just that our M&amp;A team intends to retain an actuary. That actuary would be retained through counsel, because it needs to be attorney-client privilege, needs to be under the umbrella of privilege. And that, the purpose of this person, I'm just telling you so that if you see the consultant bill come under our bill, you know, what it's for, I don't want you to be surprised. The, so as my team, you know, we have folks that specialize on the pension, for example. ECRMC has a defined benefits pension plan. And I think two, just separate plans. I'm not going to pretend to be an expert on them or what they need or how they're set up, but we're, you know, on the IVHD side, what my folks are, okay. Once these hot ones, this ECRMC comes, you know, with PMH, it's more straightforward, because we're the successor agency. So we just step into the shoes, nothing has to change. We step into the shoes, this board steps into the shoes of that board, and the hospital continues operation business as usual. With ECRMC, we're acquiring the hospital and its operations. And so what our folks are thinking about is, okay, how do we legally absorb that pension liability? And one of the ideas, which I'm not, don't hold me to it, because they're still exploring the best way to do this, to move that pension debt over, is, because we're not stepping into the shoes of ECRMC, that we're acquiring them, is to set up what they are calling potentially a mirror plan, like, a plan that's the same as the plan that's over there, and then all of, everything moves over, right? But in order to know what our mirror plan has to look like and what it can accommodate and what obligations it and what obligations it needs to be prepared to absorb, we need an actuary, an independent financial actuary to go in and look at their plan to make sure that the financial, that our plan is prepared to handle that, the liabilities and obligations in the current pension plan. So that's something that an actuary does and that my folks are saying is, it's necessary for kind of our diligence to retain that financial person, that actuary to come in and do that evaluation. So that's something my team intends to do as early as tomorrow to get them started on, that's just with respect to the pension issue, because that's very complicated, especially government pensions. So I just wanted to give that brief update so that it's not a surprise. But that's my only update for today.
Now we'll move on to administrative coordinator update, who wants to do any updates?
Now I'm going to remind you of the LACO hearing on the 24th of August of this month at 8:30 in the morning. And LACO is going to be, the agenda has happened, sent to your email, Mr. Mike, to your email. And they'll be discussing the public hearing and any, for the disillusion of partners and what else. I'll get this done.
Perfect. And with that, we'll adjourn to smoothing at 7:46.